One more time, I welcome all of you in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Hallelujah! We are going to second section. I believe always fasting prayer, when you come to the fasting, we want to learn something from God. Because this is a very perfect time, God talk with us. Hallelujah! My section, actually last three days, I was in bed. I am sick. Yesterday morning, I called my senior pastor. I told pastor, can you please arrange someone else? Pastor, okay, no problem. I pray for you. I think pastor said, oh, no problem, I will arrange someone. But pastor told me, I will pray for you. God will make you stand before, you're able to stand before God. Hallelujah! Thank you. Then after evening, you know, normally our section is Hindi. I was preaching. And after a very severe headache and body pain, I sitting outside the car. Pastor John Wesley came there. I meet him. I told the pastor, can you please tomorrow take my section? Okay pastor, no problem. I will pray for you. Hallelujah! This is our pastors, their prayer. I stand before God. I like it fasting prayer. Because fasting prayer always give the power in our life. When you sit with God, God is empower you. Many time our children, our people, especially our Hindi fellowship I talk about, they are coming and told me. You, everyone knowing English, you want Hindi? Anyone want Hindi? Malayalam? No need. Okay. They are coming and say, pastor, pray for me. Evening call and pray for me. Why? Today I was fasting. You didn't go to work? No, no, I have to work. I always told brother, this is not a fasting. You do work with hungry. When you fast, you want to sit with God and learn from God. Otherwise, you do your work and here and there, here and there, you are rounding. You do your whole work and you, your stomach is empty, you are hungry. You never having something from God. I please, I request my brothers and sisters and children, when you fast, please sit with God and learn from God. I want to go to my subjects. Second subject is very interesting subject. Mission, break at evangelism through the Holy Spirit in church. Hallelujah! That is why I want something, three things I want to teach the church. And I believe all the brothers and sisters and sitting here, are you already, are you interested in evangelism? Are you ready to go to evangelism? Okay. Because brother Shibhu is asking that everyone is excited and say, okay, we'll go. Don't go to with exciting. I want to teaching something to you. Three things I want to mention your attention. First, what is your motive for preaching the gospel? What is your motive preach the gospel? Second thing, what is your intention preach the gospel? Third thing, what is your mission? These three things, church need to understand. Then only we have a perfect evangelization in this planet earth. Otherwise, Paul say, someone is preaching some other gospel and other Jesus. Many time this, this is happening in our church, in our midst. Sorry. That is why we need to go to this deeply. I have no, I don't know how much time I have. When my pastor senior pastor raised the hand, that time I stop here. I try to one is completely totally one matter I want to teach you. Otherwise, next time, when I get, next time. Hallelujah! And we want to understanding these things. See, and our master word we are taking from Acts chapter thirteen verse two, there is, can you please Sister Jodi, give one mic for Sister Jodi? I want to read something because I know some my brothers in here. And they want know this much knowing the English, same like me. And they want to give also in Hindi words. Are you ready? Okay. Praise God. Hallelujah! Are you ready? Oh, okay. I know because when we are fasting, our voice is not come out. Hallelujah! Okay. This is the, we see that, can you, as they minister to the Lord and pastor, the Holy Spirit said, separate me, burnabas and soul for the work unto which I have called them. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! You know, everything is a history, background, what the history is going. And here is a very clearly Holy Spirit say, separate these people. Shaul or burnabas want to separate. And then after separate, the church pray for them. Okay? This is my, our main thing. There is very important Bible talk about us. Anyone going to any kind of evangelism, you want to ex- separation. Because otherwise, we did not that separate. We did not know about suppression meaning, you want to know about more something. Why the separate? Any group you separating, you know, we are giving the ordination and any, we are separating. You know, every children is knowing, every school is after exam. They have a, get a grade A, B, C. This is a separating. A is a group because they are very perfectly do the exam. And second, B is coming little bit now down. C is no more down. And this is a suppression. And we understanding always, anyone go to the, preach the gospel, we need to suppress. Hallelujah! What is our motive? This is, we need to understand. Many people, they did not know about what is a perfect motive about preaching the gospel, otherwise teaching the gospel. How, always we are doing, many people are doing what the church is teaching also this. People want to church, come to the church. Otherwise, we, our group is want numerically increase. And someone want to, some, their personal things is there. But I teach you, I say you, you preach the gospel. Your motive is the love of God. You know, I was, I was an evangelist nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and four. I was an evangelist and assistant pastor of one church. When after evangelical training, I went, I go to all northern part of India. Always our only one motive, only one motive. Because I am, I was working that place is called the Rajasthan Bilwara. That place is the largest cloth industries in the Asian, first number one largest cloth industry. Too many people is coming there, all over the India and out of Nepal and Bangladesh, this is all people are there. And my intention is there, there is too much structures is there. Only one motive I have. I want to bring more people in our church. And always I do this. Even you know, I'm many, anyone is coming, they have no job. I'm vending there. I'm, anyone is admit in the hospital, no one is there, I will go there. I always go there, give the food and all facilities I am making for them. Even one time, I bring my whole house items is given to someone. My wife is very angry with me. And result is what happen? We bring the people, we give the baptism. Then after, within two, three year, this person always the best issue for the church. They are fighting someone else. They did not growing the faith. Always you check any church, any your congregation, also any your cell group in our church of Philadelphia. That is people are together not, together fighting, not unity. Check. Their repentance is not perfect. What is the problem is happen? I'm doing many headache is coming, many problem is coming, someone is fighting, someone is, someone is going here. Then sometime is going another church. This whole problem is creating there. One day, I'm very sad and pray. I hearing one voice from God. Matthew chapter sixteen verse eighteen. God said, I build my church. Then I understand what is my, three things, three word is given to me. You are understanding this whole things. Matthew chapter sixteen eighteen, John chapter six forty-four, and Acts chapter two forty-seven. Last time I, you are want writing this. These three words, you understand God build the church. God aided the people in the church. Hallelujah! We are not do that. Otherwise, any human effect you, effort you doing there, the church is not built by the Lord. God want aided the church. You are, you want to go and preach the gospel. You want to give the gospel and pray for the people. God aided to the church. Lord Jesus say, my father, what he calls, John six words forty-four.
No man can come to me except the Father, which has sent me, draw him. And I will raise him at the last day.
Hallelujah! The Father want to draw him. Then only these people are coming. We no need to mega numerical riches church. Every, every soul, we want to give the account one day. Any soul in your church, that soul not want perish. You want to teach, you want to teach very well, they will growing in the way of God. And you recognize this kind of things because that is why Paul talk about the Philippines. Come to the Philippines, chapter one, verses fifteen and sixteen.
Some indeed preach Christ even on envy and strife and some also of goodwill. The one preach Christ of contention, not sincerely, supposing to add affliction to my bones.
Hallelujah! Many people are doing this like. They are preaching. Their motive is this. Our church want to numerically growing. All bring out, all bring, all bring. Church is the body of Christ. Every sinful person come to the church, but never they continue with sin the church. That is important. When you teach, preach the gospel, you teach this and that type of people want to aided the church. That is why God said, I will aid whoever believe, Lord aided to the church. Hallelujah! That is correct? We are not, no any pastor, no any leader. One day, I went to one place. One person is bad words talking, shouting. You know that Awali scrap, scrap area. I wasn't there. Someone is shouting and bad words is talking Hindi, he is talking. I am some prayer first searching, I recognize, I went there. I see that person. I shut wonder. He's one of the god and deacon in the church of Philadelphia. Don't laugh. We are very serious. I asking, brother, what happened? No, no pastor, something. Are you asking, why you are here? What, where are you now? Why not you come to the church? Oh, I am, sometime I am coming there, then after now. How many, how many time you, only six month? Only six month you come? Very carefully. Because we are, we want to give the account. Pray for the church. Why someone preaching gospel, their own? Ah, what is called? Some indeed preach the Christ even envy and strife and someone also goodwill. The one preach Christ of contention, not sincerely. Not sincerely! Please, anyone you send the church. This child, this kind of people, only sincere people want to go out. Not everyone. Otherwise, God's name is foil. Word of God say, you are through, my name is foil, the midst of the men, dentiles. Selected because there is separated. Holy Spirit say, separate the burnabas or shaul. Because they have that quality. They have that obedient. They have knowing about word of God. That is why Holy Spirit separate them. You know, history is then after. Even after second trip, Paul and burnabas, why the fighting? About Marcos? Mark, Paul say, no, no, this person is not good because he, middle of our journey, he slept. We need to perfect people. Because our motive is not anything, our own. Our motive is love of God. Love of God. When you have the love of God, you know, second Corinthians chapter, second Corinthians, chapter two, verse five, sorry, five fourteen fifteen.
For the love of Christ constrains us.
Constraining us?
Because we thus judge that if one died for all, then we are all dead.
Hallelujah! Only the love of the Christ, you teach the people the gospel. Not any other way. You want that love in your heart. Because one died for us. Hallelujah! This is the love of Christ. This is the Paul is writing here. Paul say, one died for us. That is why no one more died. That love is concerning us. This love, that love want your motive. When you go to the gospel, this love want, hallelujah, Christ love. And no any other things. Know your charging grace, know your benefit, know nothing in belong to you, only the Christ love. That Christ love want lead you. And you understanding that love, I have too much word in the compare, I don't go to this much. Because you know, John chapter thirteen, God loves us. That is why his only begotten son he given to us. That love, that God's love to us, that same love, we want one another. We want perishing soul. That love want to lead you preach the gospel. Don't think any kind of your, hallelujah, personal interest benefit on anything. Only Christ love. When Christ love in your heart, anyone you see, you did not say this person, this is a soul. Hallelujah! Corinthians chapters, I think this is first Corinthians sixteen. We did not know anyone in body. We know in spirit. Hallelujah! You want knowing spirit. When you that, that, that quality come in yours inside, even when the Christ of love fill in you, you did not know any person is personally. You only knowing that person is a soul of God. Is valuable. Does not want to perish because my, my Savior, my God is given to the spirit. This is our, this is the love of Christ. This love is first your motive. Hallelujah! Because Christ loves for us. Amen. We are a witness of Christ, Christ love. We want to sharing this love one another. We want to share this love all, all the planet earth. What is your motive? What is want your motive? Say loudly. Love of Christ. Once again, everyone say, love of Christ. Hallelujah! This is your motive, first motive, love of Christ. Pastor, time better. Second, what is your intention? Many, most important subject is this. Our intention is a teaching. Now, this day, last Friday, last evening, I also shared my Hindi fellowship. I told, people did not want to teaching. People want to preaching. Preaching is teaching is very different. Preacher is motivated people. Oh, excited. They showing something, 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 this thing. But teaching always making you bodily. Preaching is not. Teaching is very important. Many time, we did not give the teaching our church. We want to preaching something is happen gathering, many, many, you know, now this day, I'm always say our India, don't miss the moron, this Indian is sitting here. I think African and some Sri Lankan, Philippines. Anyway, but India, I'm always say, sixty-five rupees and one tie become a pastor. Why sixty-five rupees? India Bible Society Bible is sixty-five rupees. Now I don't know how much. Now how much the Bible? A hundred rupees, okay, anyway. Hundred, sorry, hundred, hundred rupees and one tie become a, you have hundred rupees and one tie, you become a pastor. You anywhere, you going anywhere, you doing anything. But you understand the word of God. Every word come from your mouth that is accountable. Any loose words, you did not know about. Now you doing anything is here in the planet earth. That is not. God is, hallelujah, appointed you. Hallelujah! The teaching is very important. Want to teach our church, want to teach your people, everyone, everyone, this sitting, the people, everyone want to a teacher. Because you see that the thirteen, Acts chapter thirteen verse first, two, two mention is there. Prophet and a teacher. There is teacher. See, because you know, we are all feel the Holy Spirit. Where the Jesus give the Holy Spirit us? First our teacher, Holy Spirit. John chapter fourteen verse twenty-six. But the comforter which is the Holy Ghost, whom the Father will send in my name, he will teach you all things and bring all things to your remembrance. Hallelujah! You want to learn, everyone. Not only this is not a pastor, who was leader doing, you, that is our responsibility want to teach. But you want to teach. You know, everyone is coming the worship. Put the pastors, every, every congregation have Bible study. Ask him pastor, how many people come Bible study? And, yes pastor, how many people come? You have hundred people in the worship, how much people are coming in the Bible study? Ten percent is not. Ten percent is not. Because people did not want to learn. This is a sign of anti. Want to encourage our people, everyone, everyone want to, because Holy Spirit, God given to us for teaching us. Every people want to learn from word of God, and you want ready to learning. Sorry. When Jesus compassion with the people, what did Jesus say? Jesus compassion with people, Jesus teach the people. Because Jesus say, these people are, they are without shepherd, sheep of shepherd, without shepherd, and he compassioned, and he teach them. Wherever you go and check the Bible, Lord teach them, always preaching less. And mountain of the sermon, Matthew chapter five, two, words, uh, chapter seven, last words you go and check twenty-eight. There is, I think, his teaching, his doctoring, people are amazed, astonished. How much important the teaching? Our intention want to teach the people, everyone. Always, when you want to go to preaching the, I would say, you want to go to share the gospel, you want to knowing, what you say. Many people go and say, "What is the gospel?" Gospel is this, your problem is, you come to church, your problem is gone. Your visa is put, getting, your marriage is, your marriage is well gone. You getting car, you getting, you did not house, you getting house, this is a gospel. Oh, you are sick, or no, come and pray, sickness is gone, no any disease more, no more. Foolishness, this is not gospel. Want to teach the word of God. That is important. My people are perish? Uh, everyone is know that. Uh, without, then after, uh, this is half, half, oseya. No, no, three, si, eh, four, six, four, six.
"My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge."
Lack of knowledge?
"Because you have rejected knowledge, I will also reject you, that you shall be no priest to me. Seeing you have forgotten the law of your God, I will also forget your children."
Hallelujah. My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge, because those has rejected knowledge. My dear brothers and sisters, you want knowledge about word of God, you want knowledge about God. This is not a playground. This is not a, any kind of society. We everyone want to know about God, then after want to say, "I will also reject thee." And that those shall be no priest to me. Otherwise, anyone, any leader, any pastor, did not teach their people, God will, God will reject them. Many time what happen, we are pleasing people. We are pleasing pastors elders, everyone pleasing, "Oh, that is strongly teaching," they will did not. Bible say, "Anyone please the man, they cannot please the God." Hallelujah, not pleasing anyone. Anyone is not straight forward, go, go out. You want to hear this the word of God, obey the word of God and perfectly walk with God. Otherwise, you are no chance this congregation, you want to church. We are not counting given to here, we want to counting given to there, hallelujah. Teaching is very important, Jesus is teaching. Wherever you teaching, you know, uh, the same chapter, our Acts chapter thirteen, that is what happened, but, but Jesus, lo, Paul shouting him, and Paul say, sometime you did not see anything, he is a blind, he is become blind. But you know, that person one, I think it's one word I want to bring your attention, thirteen, uh, words told, words told. Every story you are knowing that.
"Then the deputy, when he saw what was done, believed, being astonished at the doctrine of the Lord."
Ah, where he astonished, this, this happen? No, he astonished at the doctoring of the Lord. Hallelujah, otherwise, some miracle is happen, nothing happen there, because that person also many miracles doing there that time. Many miracles happen there, it's miracles, anyone is not astonished ever, you want to astonish. Through your teaching, people want to astonish, not a miracle. How many miracle is happen, which, which religions not hap, how happen the miracles right now? You go to everyone have a internet, go to YouTube and everything, every religion is doing miracles. It is correct? Hello? Then what is, we want to teach, we want to teach. Because this is not now, when, uh, Moses went to the Egypt, whatever Moses do, then that everything foreign maj, maj, majesties of them, only except the, uh, first brother. Is correct? Miracle is nothing. You want to knowing the Christ, that is important. Okay, we are stopping here, uh, pastor is raising hands, what the mission I want to witness, mission, uh, I want, what is our mission? Mission is witness, next time, anytime is getting, I want to talk with you. This is very important part, when, this is the church. This church want to teach this kind people and build this kind of people and send the out. Because word of God, Matthew chapter twenty-eight, last word we will, uh, read and govern to. Matthew chapter twenty-eight. K J B transition in this one? Uh, teaching them to observe all things, who, so I, I have commanded you, and lo, I am with you always. Teaching is very important, you teaching, God always with you, God bless you all.